Trustee Crusek.
Present.
Trustee Page.
Present.
Trustee Martinez.
Present.
Trustee Blair.
Present.
Trustee Kagan is absent for this part. Trustee Abbott.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present. Thank you very much, Claire.
Court is established.
We will now pause to acknowledge any public comments that have been received prior to the meeting or the members of our audience this evening. We welcome everyone. Any public comments, please?
Mayor, there have been no prior written comments that have been submitted.
Thank you very much. So, the purpose of tonight's budget workshop is to, one, further review and discuss the proposed 22 water sewer fund budget; two, review and discuss staff's proposed 25 cent home rule sales tax increase for fiscal year 2022 for the general fund budget; three, to recap the board's prior federal APRA, I'm going to call it, stimulus, ARPA, yeah, it's wrong on my sheet, but ARPA, sorry, stimulus funding, and to review updates from staff; and then, four, to provide an overview of the village board's current property tax abatement policy, and to determine if the board wishes to make any changes to the current practice of abating 100% of the village's debt service for the village's portion of the property tax levy. Dave, I'm going to ask if you're ready to present, please.
Thank you, Mayor Cunningham. Members of the board, good evening. We'll turn it over to Tracy to start us off here.
Good evening, Mayor and Board.
Good evening.
Let me pull this up quickly here. Okay, as the mayor mentioned, we have a full agenda tonight, and the decision points that we'll be looking to get your feedback on include the 2022 capital improvement fee, direction on the home rule sales tax, and plans for the 2021 ARPA funding. So, without further ado, let's jump into the water and sewer follow-up discussion. So, at the workshop two weeks ago, the village board requested revisions to the tenure projections to better illustrate the operating section and then the capital section, to better illustrate the capital needs of the fund. And then, there was also interest in a recommendation from staff on a water and sewer fund balance range. So, that's what we'll be discussing here tonight. So, the fund balance policy for enterprise funds states that the fund balance should be at least 25% of the following year's projected operating expenditures, plus balances reserved for capital improvements based on the most recent capital plan. I think that's verbatim from the policy. So, here tonight, staff is recommending that even though 25% is the minimum, we're recommending a range of more 25% to 40%, and that's to be able to handle any volatile years that the fund might experience. In an enterprise fund, those can come up from time to time, you know, water loss or emergency repairs. And then, this week, another difference from our last discussion was that this week, we received direction from our auditors, Lauterbach and Amon, on the accounting side of ARPA funding. So, they've been in discussion with the US Treasury and other agencies, and Lauterbach and Amon has learned that ARPA money really should only be realized once we have obligated and expensed that money before we can count it as revenues. So, in our projections here tonight, we've kept them in for simplicity's sake, but in the final budget, those will be removed from the projections. And then, in our ledger, we'll also be removing that from revenues and putting them in a liability account. So, for tonight, this is our revised tenure projections with the separated operating and capital, we'll call them buckets or funds. So, in this scenario, this was what was included in your memo that went out. We have 40% here remaining in operating. The beginning balance is 40% of the total fund balance in the fund. And then, anything above that 40% is essentially transferred to the capital section, which is in blue, to be able to establish reserves for capital in this scenario, to be able to afford and fund the capital projects. So, the orange section, as I mentioned, is operating, and then, blue is capital, and then, the yellow section is the support needed from operating to be able to fund the capital projects, as I mentioned. So, in this scenario, this is similar to what we saw at the last workshop. The assumptions in here are 20 cent annual increase to the capital improvement fee, DWC pass-through increase every other year in the odd years, and then, for this scenario, ARPA is included. ARPA is only, is a million dollars, so if you want to do some quick math, it's pretty easy to calculate what the difference would be without ARPA. Any questions on these new projections?
Any questions?
We also have 25% example here. So, 25% is remaining in operating, and then, anything above the 25% is transferred to capital. So, as you can see, compared to the 40%, in 40%, we have, you know, over $3 million in operating. And then, in the 25% scenario, we have over, just over $2 million, sorry, averaging for operating fund balance. Any questions on these?
Question for you.
Yes.
Where did you get, and I know that you did send us some info, but talk us through where you got the 40% from versus 35%?
Right. So, this is, we have Assistant Director Darren Clary created this model, and it allows us to plug in, all right, the roles are hidden here. We play with a couple of different scenarios, and here's where we can plug in, we can change it to 25% or 40%. Now, we, the range is 25% to 40%, and we developed, we were playing around with 30% to 35%. That's why we developed more of a range rather than a specific fund balance target.
Trustee Page, if I may. It really, this fund balance policy range, that we had a good debate internally as well between staff about where the board may want to consider establishing that policy range. And it really, when you get to 25% to 40%, that gives you flexibility to make adjustments each year within your, depending on what the rates are coming in, between also what your capital needs are going to be in any given year. If Director Leto were here, I bet you she would probably hope you would go more towards 50% if she were here. So, what it really boils down to is a matter of risk tolerance that the board has and where you want to set your fund balance. Clearly, 25% is the bare minimum, and we would not recommend even getting close to that, or certainly not going below that. But I think, much like the way you've set up the general fund, is having that kind of flexible range that gives you sort of a barometer to measure, okay, how's the fund's performance, and are we getting too far lower within our range, and we need to make adjustments?
As a follow-up, let's say, are the funds flexible? So, can we pull from, if we have extra in operating, pull them to capital? If there's, we need more money in operating, pull from capital to operating?
Certainly, the board does have that flexibility, Trustee Page, but a word of caution, the way the board is kind of wanting to set this up is, if you will, two separate accounts or two funds. You do want to create a scenario or a context in which the operating account is sustaining itself, is able to sort of sustain any volatility, unexpected, be it on expense side or revenue drops, given a drought year, unexpected higher pass-through charges that may come through, et cetera. And so, I say that because if you begin to start sort of in your plan, drawing from capital fund to sustain your operations, you're going to start circling back to the exact same problem we were having two to three years ago.
Thank you, Trustee Page. Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, some of our observations, looking at the 25% to 40% projections, so, in both scenarios, we're able to establish a reserves for capital. However, the operating, when we only have 25% in the operating, in the operating scenario, that leaves, you know, less room for volatility from year to year. But then, when we have, you know, 40% in operating, there's more flexibility in that scenario. So, the funds on hand for capital fluctuate in both scenarios between 1.5 and 3.5 million. The average capital expenditures throughout the 10 years average about 2.5 million. So, that range of 1.5 to 5 million in capital funds is enough for our planned capital, but wouldn't be, in our projections, wouldn't be enough for any unforeseen capital that may come up, which is likely as our system ages. And then, the operating side can support the capital needs throughout most of the year, but is unable to fund capital beginning in 2030. And then, as always, we're recommending that we revisit the capital improvement fee and our rate recommendations every year as the performance of an enterprise fund can fluctuate from year to year.
Mayor, if I may, an important assumption that's also built in this 10-year is that, and Tracy will correct me if I'm wrong, but in the even years, so in the odd years, we're sort of passing on the expenses or the pass-through charges from DWC in the city of Chicago. In the even years, we are absorbing those rate increases, should they occur. And so, that's another factor that I wanted to be sure the board is aware of that. Obviously, you're going to have the policy flexibility to make that decision in any given year as we go along, but just so we're clear on the assumptions.
Thank you, Administrator Stoneage. Okay, and then, just to bring it back to the capital improvement fee, you've seen this slide before, but for this year, we're proposing a 20 cent increase to the capital improvement fee. This would bring it to 80 cents per 1,000 gallons, which would generate about $650,000, and this would put us closer to a 350-year replacement cycle. Director Bethel, at the last meeting, I think, recommended that our goal is to be more on a 75- to 100-year replacement cycle. So, this would give us some progress towards that goal. And then, I'm still on.
Anyone have any questions on that or any follow-up, any needed? Yes, please, Trustee Blair?
I have that on the next slide. So, the 20 cent increase, the impact to the average water customer would be about $1.30 per billing cycle, about $10.30 annually, and it would generate $145,000 in additional revenues. And any other questions on some of our assumptions?
One more follow-up question. Is there a recommended percentage minimum for the capital improvement fund? So, we say 25% to 40% for operating. Is there a recommendation for capital?
There's no best practices for capital. I think it's, it would probably depend on your system, so there's no percent recommendation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so, this is our discussion question. So, we just wanted to get your feedback. Do these revised tenure projections make it easier in your decision-making? Does it help facilitate the discussion compared to our prior projections? And then, we're looking for your feedback on the 2022 capital improvement fee, if you're supportive of the 20 cent increase.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask our board members, the revised tenure projections, do they better facilitate, help you make any decisions and give you the information that you need? Any feedback, please?
Mayor?
Please, Trustee Martinez?
All right. I like the 40%, and the reason I like it is because I see that as just a buffer, something that is more of a guideline. If we need to get below it, we've got a little leeway. I have asked, since I joined this board, why 25%?
Right.
And I knew that that's the way we always used to do things. I think 40% has been more of a conservative approach, and I think it helps me, anyway, to look at the projections moving forward. And just as a quick follow-up on the next point, I'd support the 20 cents.
Thank you, Trustee Martinez.
Anyone else, please? You know, this is a lot, and we've been talking about this for a while, but I'm going to go ahead and ask, I'm going to ask Trustee Kagan, please, if you could let us know just your thoughts on the two points, go right down the line.
Well, one of the things, since I've had, you know, significant amount of time as part of the board, we've continued to watch over the years as the DuPage Water Commission through their various cycles, who's dealt with increases down the system that we, as the end user, have at one point in time either eaten ourselves, increased, passed along to our residents. One of my biggest concerns is, you know, we've heard already from the DuPage Water Commission that they anticipate additional increases from the city of Chicago in the out years. I am, I would rather get the money earlier, which could potentially allow us to smooth over future increases from the city of Chicago without us immediately having to turn around to our residents for an increase. So, I would seek to support staff's higher recommendation.
And if I could ask you, Trustee Kagan, did the revised tenure projections help you to make any decisions, or do you think it will help in our decision-making process?
I do believe so, yes.
All right, thank you very much. Trustee Blair, please?
I'd say probably closer, probably a little lower than that, $10 to $12, because when we were looking at doing a 30 cent increase, the impact to the average water customer was around $15 a year. So, if you use more water, probably be more like $11. Right. I think you're right in saying that. Thank you.
And again, did the projections assist? Okay, great. All right, thank you. Trustee Page, please?
The projections were helpful, thank you. Because of our aging system and just being able to make water main break repairs, I think we have to go with the 20 cent increase for it, and we'll review every year, correct?
Exactly, yes. Over a year, we'll come back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Crusek?
I would say that the breaking it out like this with the capital separate is a little bit easier to look at. I, I almost would be in favor of the 30 cents that was originally proposed if we now have it broken out to be into capital. And Village Administrator Stoneage, you said that really we don't want to be messing around with moving it back and forth, correct?
That would be our recommendation, correct?
So, I would be fine with the 20 cents, and I guess we can look at it again next year. I just, I think that with the, trying to get to, and sorry, Chris, I don't know that we will ever get to 75 or 100 years, but it would be nice to make sure that we do have the funds to keep the rejuvenation of the system going. But, so, as long as that capital improvement fee stays with the capital side, I'm okay with it.
Trustee Abbott, please?
I'm okay with the 20 cent annual increase, and the separating out capital and operating is helpful to me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, now, I also have the privilege of looking at general fund revenues. So, if you recall at, I think it was the, oh, so it's the second budget workshop, we're getting them all kind of confused here. We reviewed the general fund deficit with the board, and reviewed our recommendation on a potential quarter percent increase to the home rule sales tax. So, tonight, as part of our, you know, year-end budget, finalizing our year-end budget, we revise our revenue estimates. So, we'll review those tonight, and then, we have two scenarios on the general fund five-year to present. So, these are, this is a summary of our year-end revenue estimate changes. So, we have six revenue sources that are overperforming, meaning they're doing better than our expectations, and three that are underperforming or performing lower than we expected. We look at the 2021 year-end estimates to see if we can make adjustments there, and then, the 2022 budget as well. So, just to be clear, these are, these estimates are prepared in June, and then, normally revised in September or October, when Nadine is here. But this year, we actually have an extra month of revenue estimates, since we weren't able to get to it till late October. So, building permits, due to the tornado, we're seeing an increase here of about $75,000. So, we've adjusted that accordingly, but we don't expect that increase to continue into 2022. And then, real estate transfer tax, with the housing market boom, we're seeing an increase here of about $230,000. We do expect that to continue into part of '22, but to be more of on the conservative side, we're anticipating that to decline in the second half of the year. Natural gas, I don't know if any of you have gotten a heating bill yet, but those prices are projected to increase about 30% compared to last year at this time. So, that equates to about a $70,000 increase this year, and then, $120,000 next year. Engineering fees, this varies on the projects. This year, we're looking at a $110,000 increase, and we've kept our estimate the same for 2022. State shared income tax, this comes from IML. We have no change in the 2021 year-end estimate, but they have increased their 2022 estimate due to higher-than-expected corporate profits. And then, sales tax, we'll talk about on the next slide. Electric utility taxes, these are underperformers. We had a milder summer, which is causing a decline in electric utility tax of about $65,000. We kept our estimates the same for 2022, since it depends on weather patterns primarily. And then, telecommunications tax, this revenue source declined significantly year-over-year. This year, it's 17% lower, which is the most we've seen. And then, for 2022, we've used an average decline from the prior years. The decline here is due to less landlines and increase in data usage, as far as we can tell. There's really not much information from the state on this. And then, use tax, this is the offset from the online sales tax. So, as we see online sales tax increase, IML is expecting a decline in use tax, primarily in 2022. So, the total of all these revenue revisions for the 2022 budget is about $822,000 over our original budget projections, which, so that increases our revenues to about $21.8 million in the general fund. Now, looking at sales tax. So, we mentioned this in prior AMs, the volatility in this, in general sales tax and home rule sales tax from month to month. So, in the first quarter of the year, that, those declines are primarily from COVID-19 restrictions. We received the first remnants of online sales tax in April. Sales tax is four months in arrears. And then, the volatility from then on, from what we can tell from what we learned from IDOR, is primarily related to inconsistencies in reporting and compliance issues with the online sales tax. We're assuming, we haven't heard much from IDOR, we're assuming these issues have improved, but some of them may continue into 2022. So, with that, we looked at our preliminary sales tax estimates to determine if an adjustment was needed. We averaged the online sales tax receipts, starting, or the receipts from January, to get an average amount, again, assuming some of the inconsistencies might continue into 2022. So, the percent that we were looking, percent increase that we were looking at was about 15% compared to our original 2022 projections. So, that equates to a $430,000 increase in general sales tax and an $80,000 increase in home rule sales tax, for a total budget impact of about $510,000. And that's included in the total increase of $822,000 that I included here. Any questions on our sales tax estimates?
If I may, Mayor, I'll make just a quick point for the board. The sales tax is showing some, obviously, some great growth and rebounding from the last few years, and in fact, our projections would put us in line with our highest sales tax year ever, which would have been in 2016, when Sam's Club and JCPenney were at full operation.
Thank you, Administrator Stoneage. So, as you can see, we have, this is the general fund five-year. The increase in revenues is helping our general fund deficit, but we still, we're still ending 2022 with a deficit of 1.7 million. This excludes ARPA, which is different from what we presented at the budget workshop, based on the guidance from Lauterbach and Amon. So, our ending balance is 57% with the revised revenue projections. Any questions here?
Tracy, I had a question. So, what is the, what is, what was, can you remind me the board direction regarding the target for the balance? What percent? Was it 40% to 50% or what is?
And the general fund?
Administrator Stoneage, maybe you can help. Maybe this is better directed to you.
Yeah, the range?
Yeah, what was that?
25 to 50.
25 to 50?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, now, looking at the home rule sales tax. You've seen this slide before. It's a summary of our research on the home rule sales tax. So, a quarter percent increase would increase our tax rate to 8%, which is in line with our surrounding communities. The revenues generated from the additional quarter percent would be about 1.1 million, and that's based off our most recent projections, and 100% of that would be allocated to the general fund. This increase in revenues would reduce the operating deficit by about 50% over the next five years, and then, this revenue source would carry no administrative, additional administrative responsibilities on staff. And then, if approved, we would have to file it with the state by April 1st, and we would, the tax would go into effect July 1st of 2022. I do want to make a note, I don't think I included on this slide, oh, what's the next one? Sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. So, that note about the revenue would be effective July 1st of 2022. So, with that, we wouldn't actually see a full year of the new quarter percent of home rule sales tax until 2023. So, that's why the deficit for 2022 is still 1.4 million. We will get a few months of the new revenue source, a few months of revenue, but majority of the impact will be in 2023. So, we see the deficit decline to $750,000, and the ending balance is around 57%. Questions on these projections?
Tracy, I have a question. Do you have old numbers, like 2018?
Do you have old numbers, like 2018, 1920? What I'm trying to figure out is, did having a fund balance help us with the unforeseen pandemic? Is it something that we need to consider of always have a little nest egg because you don't know what's coming?
Yes, the fund balance did help. We, we have, over the years, I wish I had it with me, but I know off the top of my head, our fund balance used to be around, you know, $21 million in this fund. I think when I started in finance, the fund balance percentage was over 100%. So we have reduced our, our reserves, which was, you know, the board's direction. And our bond rating agencies would, would like us to continue. They, they agree, we have, we have healthy fund balances now, but they do caution that if we continue eating away at our reserves, it could result in a credit downgrade. Any other questions?
Mayor, mayor, I'm sorry, were you done? So, well, our, the people that are advising us, obviously you don't want fund balances getting down too low. Do they give you a percentage of what you should not go below?
It's probably around 25 to 50%.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's a huge range though for an auditor.
Less than auditor and more of the bond rating agency. So if they see, if they see a consistent structural imbalance to your operating fund, they're going to call it out.
Okay. Does the fact that we're home rule give us a little bit of leeway with them? Or does it, do they take that into account that we have the ability to raise?
The fact that we are a governmental agency in general bodes well, because they know we have taxing authority.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
How much of our deficit, sorry Tracy, how much of our deficit is pension payment? Of the 1.4 projected for 2022, how much of that is because of pension?
So that, and Assistant Director Clary will probably talk about this later. Our total, I think our pension obligation for this year is around 4.7 million. And the tax levy only covers 3.3 million, Darren. So this year was the first year that, or this was the second year that we had to do a transfer from the general fund to cover our obligation to the pension fund, and it was about 1.2 million.
And our pension payments start going down in 2023, or I can't remember the year?
They don't necessarily go, they went down this year about $100,000. This year, it's 4.6 million, I believe. But they're projected to stay relatively flat, I believe.
Yes, Trustee Page, that's correct. We do see a leveling off of the pension fund, but obviously that could change from year to year, correct? Based on market conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so now we have our discussion questions. So the first point is just a timeline. So if the board is supportive of the quarter percent increase to the sales tax, we would prepare an ordinance to be considered at the next board meeting in conjunction with the 2022 budget adoption. And then that concludes our presentation. So now we'll be looking for feedback on the board to see if you're supportive of the quarter percent increase to the home rule sales tax.
Thank you very much, Tracy. Appreciate the presentation this evening. So just in an effort to get through this, we're going to go ahead, and this time I'm going to start on my left, and ask Trustee Abbott, please, are you supportive of the quarter percent home rule sales tax increase?
I am not. Based upon the fact that we've, as a board, decided that we should be in the 25 to 50% range. According to the budgeted amount for 2022, we're looking at 56.33%, so we're above the range. If we were to enact the 0.25 tax increase, we would be above the range for the next three or four years. I mean, we came up with that range for a reason, I thought. And I know historically, we wanted to get that down because we felt it was not wise to be sitting on 100% of your, of your, of your annual need. So my, my position is no at this time. I would want to look at it again next year to see where we are. I think we've got a lot of uncertainties with revenues that have already been mentioned here. And the other thing too, is that we always budget conservatively. You know, I've been on the board for 10, 10, 11 years now, and every time you look out five years, it's always doomsday, but doomsday never comes. So, and I don't, I don't blame anybody. I mean, that's what, that's, I want conservative budgeting so that we don't get into really, you know, tight spots down the road. So, you know, I have no complaint with the, with the way that you guys budget. But I, I take into account that when you budget conservatively, you're usually going to wind up with more money at the end of a year than you think you do. So those are my reasons.
Trustee Cruz, please.
Sorry, quick question. It says that we would have to adopt it by April 1st of 2022 to take effect July 1st.
Correct.
Okay, so at this point in time, I would not be in favor of it. I'd like to see a few more months of what the online sales tax brings in. I'd like to see what happens as we decide how we're going to spend ARPA funds. And I think that that's something that we can give a little, we could still wait a little bit on before we have to enact something that, at this point, I just don't see that we have to do it yet.
Thank you.
Question for you, Tracy. Tell me the flaws in the argument of dedicating this quarter percent sales tax straight to pension.
I'll take that one, Trustee Page. The fund, and as, as according to the new state statute, obviously the pension fund is going to be transferring in total in terms of the management of the investments to the state. Not to the state of Illinois, but to the newly created police and then the fireside pension funds. And so I think there's a level of uncertainty, right, as to how that's going to play out, what, what their funding strategy is going to be, how, what's their policy going to be. And I would caution the board about dedicating entire, you know, an excessive amount of money until you have better clarity on what their policy is going to be, how they're going to manage the fund, what their investment strategies are going to be, and what their market returns are.
I'd like to revisit this in January or February.
Okay.
Trustee Martinez, please.
I originally was in favor of this quarter percent increase. But the more I listen to my fellow trustees and the more I evaluate the way the revenue has been calculated and the unknowns of the next few months, I concur that we should wait. At the worst, maybe we'll review it again for a 2023 implementation. But at this point, I will wait. I will not, I'm not in favor of doing it right now.
Thank you.
Trustee Blair?
For all the reasons that were already mentioned, I would like to just wait on this.
Trustee Kagan?
Well, while I, I've listened to what my fellow board members have said, I understand what staff's recommendation on this is. Again, we're, we're looking at what our surrounding neighbors are already at and doing. The fact that a majority of our nearby neighbors, Downers Grove, Darien, Pauling Brook. And again, we, we look at other committees that are preparing to make these changes or our, you know, non-home ruled communities. I am prepared to follow staff's recommendation for the 25%.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, everyone. Now I'm going to turn over to Assistant Director Clary.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Just want to touch on where we're at with ARPA decisions, where the board has left off and latest direction that staff has been provided. Where we're at sitting currently is the board has given some direction, some thought, doing a million dollars in our general fund and putting another million dollars in feedback. Another million dollars in our water sewer fund for capital purchases. Couple other considerations are inquiring about social worker. We weren't certain at first if the guidance from the Treasury was going to coincide with a social worker, but after reading further guidance and interpreting with our, with our audit team, the guidance is pretty clear with mental and behavioral issues and working with the public that most, if not all, the social worker would be eligible expense with ARPA funds. We're, board is also considering potentially one-time grants for nonprofits, the amount of 2,500 to 5,000 per grant recipient. And then we are presently waiting on what we're going to earmark for our second distribution of 2.27 million, which would be coming next year in 2022. And then our, in conversation with our auditors, we've had numerous number of them over the past couple of weeks, there was some potential funding that could come as the state and the county get awarded ARPA dollars and uses for them. That may potentially pass through down to municipalities. It could be in the form of grants, it could be in the form of revolving loans. I E P A was specifically noted, potentially having water funds available in the future. This is all just conjecture at this point, there's no certainty of it, but just something for the board to be aware.
Here, if I may.
Sure.
Two quick points to Assistant Director Clary. The social worker, so we did, that was one of the board's questions last budget workshop. It would qualify as ARPA. The one, I think, policy consideration from the board as you consider the next payments of ARPA next year is, do you want to use ARPA to sustain what might be long-term operational expenses with one, with one-time dollars? Or do you instead want to use these one-time dollars for one-time projects, i.e. capital? It's not a decision you have to make tonight, but it's something to think about as we, as we go into next year and even the next budget cycle. The one-time grants, that was some feedback I got from the board more informally, as you recall, from a memo from several weeks ago. The one item really that the board is prepared to do that tonight is the DuPage Senior Citizen Council. So that is a, is a agency that is requested of the village to, for the board to consider providing some funding to that agency. And I think most responses, at least the majority of the board was supportive, not all. And then I, my feedback that I heard was a comfort level somewhere in the 2,500 to $5,000 range. So if the board is prepared to give us that direction tonight, that would be ARPA qualifying, and that would be a payment that we would just pay out this fiscal year, meaning the current year, if the board's comfortable with that. Or we can wait till next year.
I'm going to go ahead and ask for feedback specifically as to what Administrator Stonehenge was just telling us with regards to the Senior Citizen Council, DuPage County. So if anyone has any feedback, we're going to try to poll everyone, so.
Mayor, mayor?
Yes, please, Trustee Cruz.
Before I have feedback on that, I do have a question, because based on the memo that we got, if I'm understanding it correctly, until we actually spend the ARPA funds, they are not counted as revenue. So we can't just take a million dollars and say it's going to the general fund, we have to spend it on something.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. We have to park it in a liability account until we actually spend the eligible expense dollars, that's correct. Now, it could be the fact that we could put a million dollars in the general fund in 2021 potentially. There is still further guidance coming out, but we, it's the board's decision if you want to also do 2022 or out years.
And then along with that, if, if we used it for cap, the same thing in the water and sewer fund, if we put money into that, do we have to have a project that we're going to spend it on right now, or is, how, how will that work?
The feds do require the village to create basically a plan, right? And you have to appropriate those monies by 2020, no later than 2024, and be expended by 2026. So yes, essentially, we would have to report a qualifying project or expense to the federal government, in which case they would want to see a qualifying water or sewer type infrastructure project.
Okay. Okay, I'll get, I'll be back to you on the senior thing.
As a follow-up, does the project have to be completed by 2023?
Doesn't have to be completed by 2023. It does have to be completed and all payments made by 2026, December 31st, 2026.
In regards to the grant, is it truly a grant? Is there staff time? Like, is somebody filling out an application, somebody reviewing? Or is it, if you're a nonprofit with a 501(c)(3), we'll give you a check?
That's a good question. Now, do you have detail on that?
Trustee Page, I'm sorry, I might not understand the question, I'm sorry.
Is it truly a grant process? Is there going to be an application, a review, or can you just be a nonprofit and?
Grant application review to the village for consideration? Or you mean from, grant application from the federal government to us for ARPA?
Let's say I'm nonprofit ABC. Do I just come to the village and say, hey, I heard you're giving to nonprofits and you all write a check? Or do I have to fill out a form and do some kind of formal review with the village?
That would be up to the board if you wanted to establish a nonprofit grant program using ARPA funds. The county has a fairly robust program that they are, have been and are putting together and are using multi-millions of ARPA towards qualifying nonprofits. But the board could choose to do that.
I would support a grant program probably on that caveat that you didn't get county money. Because if you received a quarter of a million dollars from the county, there's less need for you to come to us. But I would support a nonprofit grant program. But I would also caution that it can't just be a request. There has to be some kind of due diligence done by us as the givers of the money.
Sure, in some ways, I would compare that, Trustee Page, to the Small Business Assistance Program that you all approved last year. The restaurant.
And again, Trustee Page, thank you. The second half of what you said was what I was going to ask you to clarify on. The only thing I'd also caution the board is if you're going to do such a program, you, one, set a concrete cap of dollars to be put towards that. And two, and obviously cap per, not just cap per applicant, but cap of the total amount. Then also put, develop in writing your criteria and, and the guidelines by which there will be review and approval of any such grant.
Thank you. So I'd like to just ask a point of clarification, please. Are we saying with regards to the request by the DuPage County Senior Citizens Coalition having a grant application to the Village of Woodridge? Yeah, if you don't mind, I'm sorry.
I would say don't do a runoff, one-off of ARPA funds. So if they're getting ARPA funds, then they should go through whatever process, assuming the board agrees to use these ARPA funds for nonprofit grants.
There was a formal request by the DuPage Senior Citizen Council, and it's not unlike any annual request that they usually send to the village, truly.
Be tied to the number of seniors that they are serving here in Woodridge. So with our increase in senior housing, they've now come to us. I don't know that it's been every year, but it is pretty consistent making a request formally, just stating the meals on wheels, the wellness checks, you know, all the things that they're performing, and the numbers of residents that they are visiting on a, every other week to deliver food or et cetera. Just, just so you all know how they're coming to us and why.
Do we normally give every year? But not ARPA funds, but just general fund funds?
No, we do not.
Okay.
Mayor, mayor, can someone remind me what our dollar amount was that we thought that ARPA funds could cover as far as lost revenue by the village?
Initial estimates are 1 million that we believe can qualify.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, please? Hey, thank you.
Thank you very much. The next section here to cover before we are finished for the workshop this evening is some clarification that the board was seeking on property tax abatements. I'm going to take, I want to take a second and kind of rephrase and restructure how we think about property tax abatements. Don't think it, if we remove abatements from the conversation and just talk about, is the board, does the board want to levy property taxes for debt service? And so, for example, we have 1.8 million in debt service that we have to pay in 2022. Each year, actually, whenever a bond is issued, that paperwork is filed with the county along with a schedule every year of the amount of debt service that we will automatically have on our tax rolls, should we take no action each year. So for, for example, for the 1.8 million in 2022, DuPage County already knows they're going to add 1.8 million to our tax roll if we don't perform any actions. Each year in December, the board, our first meeting in December, the board approves abatements, full abatements of our, our debt service, meaning that we do not levy and pass those costs on to our residents. So this is what. So this is what, each year we do that, we've been doing it since, I think, two thousand and three, uh, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, this is kind of part of when we pass our ord- tax levy ordinance in December, we pass the abatement ordinance as well. We file it all together with the county. However, the timing for the tax levy abatements, uh, unlike the tax levy that's in the end of December, the due date is March first for any abatements. So if the board is entertaining or interested in further discussion of not abating or, you know, like a levying for tax uh debt service, that is something that doesn't have to be decided and filed and uh ordained before the end of December, it can be postponed into January, February, twenty-twenty-two. So I kind of just wanted uh lay out the framework of of what that means, uh, so we can start to discuss. Uh, this is the timeline of our whole tax levy. I won't go into great detail, I just wanna point to the two December boxes there in the middle. Uh, on the bottom, again, uh, this is when, the first meeting in December, and December second is when we, the board would be approving our regular tax levy and our abatements. Uh, the tax levy would still have to be uh approved at that time so that we can uh file before the last Tuesday in December, and it's required for the county to do, uh, by law to do. Um, and then you see that top box two, March first, that is actually the due date for filing abatements. These are the two scenarios that we had uh presented, Steph had presented to you back in our first uh workshop or two. Yeah, I just formatted it a little bit differently and laid out a little bit differently. The scenario to the left is if we were to levy for all of our debt related to the police facility. Scenario on the right is if we were to levy for just the twenty-twenty-one debt. So if you remember, in December two thousand and nineteen, we issued five-thousand dollars in G O bonds to the police facility. And twenty-twenty-one, we issued twenty-million dollars in bonds for the police facility. So both of those, both of our uh costs for debt service next year is on the left-hand side. So if you start in the very top row, our debt service to be paid in twenty-twenty-two for all of our debt is one-point-eight-million dollars. Should the board choose to pass on the cost of debt service for our police facility next year to uh on the tax bills and onto the residents of one-point-two-million dollars, that would mean we would have to be abating the different, or six-hundred-thousand dollars. Again, normally we abate one-point-eight-million-dollar status quo. This is a scenario where we do not, and we put additional property tax dollars in the levy. Excuse me. And this is separate from the three-point-three-million dollars that the board is uh called the regular tax levy, the determination we're gonna be presenting later tonight. That's a standalone, uh, think about it in two different buckets here. We have the abatement piece and we have the regular tax levy piece. So this would be in addition to the three-point-three-million dollars. So you're looking at four-point-five-million-dollar total village tax levy for next year. This is a thirty-six percent increase. The determination itself later is a point-seven-five percent from last year.
Uh, Mayor.
Yes, please, Trustee Martinez.
I'm confused.
Okay.
Are you suggesting, I'm looking at these numbers here, that we will be passing on to the residents and increasing tax to cover this?
So this scenario does make that suggestion, yes. This is something that we normally abate and we are just coming to the board to present uh another uh option to collect revenues, should the board be um interested in such.
Trustee Martinez, if I may, uh, this was a question of the board too, that I I think it's been some time before uh since you all have discussed or considered your tax abatement policy. And it's been a pretty good historical practice for some time now that we abate a hundred percent of our debt service. And instead, you decide to allocate and use other revenue resources that are at your disposal. Um, so we're just coming back showing you what the net effect might be and whether the board wishes to change your current policy. Uh, and obviously, it is not insignificant to the tax levy uh when you begin to not abate a hundred percent of your of your debt.
Yes, please, Trustee.
I think I understand the slide, but the one-point-eight-million is our debt service for everything but the police facility?
The one point, our our actual full debt service, I I could make this note as well, our full debt service is actually two-point-four-million dollars, but we have about six-hundred-thousand dollars, the Park District reimburses us for half of the forty-four acres. So that has been excluded in this in this scenario, uh, we would not include that piece. So there's one-point-eight-million dollars after we've reimbursed for the from the Park District that we could abate or not.
And that includes the police department box?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
One-point-two-million of that one-point-eight-million dollars is all police facility bonds.
Madam Mayor. Darren, I need you to help me out here, because this is something I have a hard time getting, wrapping my brain around. I I looked online, there's no uh uh debt, there's no uh abatement of levies for dummies book out there, so work with me here.
Sure, sure.
So with the levy is what we tell, what I'm trying to figure out is, the way we currently do it, we levy for it, but then we abate it, okay? Is that right?
Not exactly, so when we issued, we went out for our bonds and 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 all of that paperwork, for all our bond paperwork, that gets also sent to the county. There's a one page on that, in that document that says, this is how much debt service we're going to add to your tax rolls, Woodridge uh for each year. There's seven-hundred-thousand this year, one-point-two, and it's got the schedule. They automatically will levy our, put this in the levy if we don't tell them not to. That's what the abatement, abatement is saying, don't do that. Abate, removing it.
So so define abate, if you could.
Remove.
Okay.
To not tax.
So when we're talking about abating this, we're, what 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 you're saying then, if I understand you correctly, is that we're telling the township, don't put this on the bills, don't count this.
Correct.
Do they bill us then, and we just pay it?
It, it is to, like Administrator Stone said, we have absorbed, if you will, and paid the debt service using other revenues. Some municipalities, there's like, I believe, twelve in DuPage County who do uh levy for some portion of their debt service. So we don't do any for our debt service.
Okay, so what, why do we have to abate? I mean, is there some law that the township would have to, that we have to notify that them of that debt? And they have to put it in there unless we tell them not to?
Correct, we have to inform them of the exactly the amount he shared that they would have to take from our.
Okay, so, all right, so I think I'm getting a little bit of a handle on this. So so basically, you know, what we've done in the past is have, let's say, one-point-eight-million, we tell the township, do not lev- do not levy for this. Take it off the rolls, essentially.
Every, correct.
Okay, and then we just pay it through our other funding mechanisms.
Right.
General fund or whatever.
Exactly, capital projects fund.
Capital fund, okay. Okay, thank you, that was helpful.
Yeah, it's 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 interesting because it's not ideally, I think, fundamentally how you'd think it would work. Why would you tell them to levy and then not levy? Just don't do it at all, right? But they already have it, they're already gonna do it, and we have to tell them not to.
Uh, okay, that helps a lot, thank you.
Darren, follow-up, because I wanna make sure I'm understanding the two different scenarios.
Sure.
The one-point-two abatement is for the twenty-million dollars in bonds we issued this year. The one on the right, or my right, yeah, you're right, too.
Correct.
And then the six-hundred-thousand abatement.
Sorry, sorry, six-hundred-thousand, six-hundred-thousand is on on your right, we're just, it's just, it's just a debt, so six-hundred-thousand is for each bond, is what our cost is next year. In twenty-twenty-two, we're gonna pay uh in the neighborhood of six-hundred-thousand for each, for two thousand and nineteen bonds, and we're gonna pay six-hundred-thousand for twenty-twenty-one bonds. Uh, the reason why, even though one's five-million, one's twenty-million, is because of the schedule is much uh smaller on the two thousand and nineteen bonds. Um, so if we wanted to levy for the police, for the entire police facility, it would be your left side. That's how much we're levying, we're passing on a full one-point-two-million dollars on the left-hand side. On the right-hand side, we're only gonna levy for part of it, for six-hundred-thousand. So think of, think about the new scenario, think about the addition to the tax levy. That's really what you're putting on us, on the left side, it's for all of it, one-point-two-million. On the right side, it's just for one of the debt payments, which is six-hundred-thousand. Abatement is just our way of saying what to remove to get to where our goal is.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions or?
Again, this is for uh, you know, for informational purposes only. Should the, should the board choose to uh show interest and entertain uh not abating a hundred percent? Uh, this is something that uh we can um postpone if needed.
So we're asking our board members here this evening um if they want to make a change, something different than we're already doing.
Correct.
Madam Mayor, can I ask a question, one more? So if we were to change our policy, and that's, we're talking about raising property taxes, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
One else, any questions?
And Mayor, if I may, I take that to mean that there is no desire on the part of the board to change your current abatement policy, right? And?
Correct.
I don't wanna see an increasing property taxes, so if that's the question, that's the answer.
Did everyone, okay? We got everyone, thank you, everyone.
Yep. Assistant Director Clary, would you take us back to the ARPA, if we can just uh?
Sure.
Make sure we tie up that component of the presentation, if we could.
Right, so the question for the board was regarding ARPA, the one-time grants for nonprofits. Um, and then there was uh twenty-five-hundred to five-thousand per recipient. Can I ask a question of clarification? How many do we receive a year requests?
It's very minimal, and maybe Assistant Administrator Halleck could have better clarify, but it's very few.
Very few and very few of late. In in addition to the DuPage County Senior Citizens Coalition, I mean, I think that they do ask every year. However, we don't always, are not able to always do that, but in addition to them, I really can't think of many.
I think District Ninety-nine, um, the education. Yeah, okay, pizza wars, things like that.
It is minimal, we do not receive, just to clarify for the board, um, many requests for that. So the point brought up was uh Trustee Page um saying that with regards to the one-time grants that we established, and I hope I'm going to say this correctly, a formal grant request um application. And also, if they have already or are going to be receiving ARPA funds, that we would also be made aware of that. Anything else, any other comments from anyone or?
Sorry.
Trustee Martinez, do you have a comment or? And then we'll come back.
Just a question, because the ARPA funds, if we allocate the ARPA funds, they must be spent by two thousand and twenty-five or twenty-six, somewhere in.
Appropriated by the end of twenty-twenty-four designated, and then spent in total by twelve thirty-one, twenty-six.
For instance, I'm looking at the considerations here, and social worker is a big thing that I support. But that would be an ongoing expense beyond two thousand and twenty-five or twenty-six. And we use the ARPA for the first three or four years and then allocate something else, funds from somewhere else?
Yes.
And the same question applies to the grants. Do we use the ARPA funds for the first two or three, three or four years and then find funds for something?
Yes.
I I have a question too. Um, what, now, I know, the ARPA we cannot use for the facilities, correct? That that one we cannot.
Correct.
Okay. What other items could we use it for that maybe we're not realizing right? I mean, we have two, two considerations in front of us. I would like to know what other considerations before we we say we're gonna use it for social worker or set up a grant program. I would like to know what the other considerations might be. Well, we can't use it for the capital project, right? Right, right. Yeah, what else would we be able to use that for?
Do we have a, there's a, and there's still some clarification and and coming out. Uh, I I know our auditor's been, uh, have had, actually had some conflicting answers, depending on who they talked to, the Treasury and D C E O. Um, but there are, you know, there are basically, I don't have them in front of me, um, there are four categories. Um, one is revenue loss, it is the most confusing uh and least uh, you know, clear area. It does involve a calculation uh looking at our uh our trend of revenues, and then it'll spit out a number, basically. Um, G F O A's website has a calculator that does this for us, it's basically become, quote-unquote, you know, more or less the Bible for uh showing that you do have a true revenue loss. Um, there is behavioral and uh mental and social uh well-being category. Um, and water and sewer and broadband infrastructure, these other categories that are not revenue loss. You don't have to prove uh through the revenue revenue loss calculation that you have them, like water sewer projects. If you have water sewer projects, uh, you don't have to go through the calculation process, you can spend it on water sewer projects or broadband projects. Uh, the social worker would fall under the behavioral and mental health category, uh, essential pay for workers. Um, there is still regarding, it's it's not like the CARES Act funding in terms of being able to fund public safety uh payroll with it. Um, I don't believe that's going to be come out in further interpretations of the Treasury guidance, but it is still something they're clarifying, but I don't believe that's gonna be knowledgeable cost uh either. But those are the four categories that uh, for example, I just attended a lot of, I can name a webinar on, um, but yes.
What I would, I guess what I would like, you hit all the the main care categories. I think before I'm comfortable earmarking anything, I would like, if staff can, like a wish list, maybe, okay, of where this could be used. Um, and include the social worker, the grand pro, you know, but I would, I would like, like a laundry list that uh would be, would apply to the village that we could be able to use it in other areas, or all the areas that we could use it before I start designating some for one or the other.
Sure, and keep in mind too, the revenue loss is something that we can calculate for each year. Uh, so that there'll be multiple years, so you can calculate for revenue loss, uh, water and sewer projects. I'm sure Chris and Jeff can attest to a number of projects um that we have earmarked in out years uh that were actually in our calculations for the water sewer fund. Um, you know, water meter replacement program, uh, I believe there's uh water mains, lift station, things like that, um, are all applicable uh expenses that we can use uh as well, but.
I know, it's a lot of work, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
But it would, I would have a better understanding of where this money would be best put before we start, you know, picking and choosing one or two at a time. I would like the overall picture, if I could.
Madam Mayor.
Please, Trustee Cruz.
So does proving that we had a million-dollar revenue loss in and of itself say we can take the million dollars and put it in the general fund?
The answer we got from the auditors was yes and no. Um, that is most of the determination. It it seems like, if that is most of the determination, it's still, because I asked the question, we we have a deficit. We can, we know we have a deficit, we can show that, right? Um, does that qualify us? She says no. Uh, what you have, there's a, A, you do the calculation, and B, it has to be spent on eligible expenses within that category. And the eligible expenses within that category is some of the gray area they're ironing out and gonna get back to us in terms of further clarification. Um, it's it's interesting because you have to prove the revenue loss and the expenditures to spend it on, it kind of sounds a little bit, you know, different than you're maybe used to hearing, hearing it, because I, it was some confusion on our end too. Uh, but there's further clarification coming out on that.
Because I kind of, well, I kind of agree with Trustee Blair in that I'd like to see some more things. So it doesn't sound like we're gonna be able to do much with this money until twenty-twenty-two anyway, at this point in time, because here we are on November fourth. So I would like to know if, like, maybe Public Works can say, hey, here's projects that we can, that are kind of ready to go in the capital side, water and sewer, that we can spend money on, here's how much we would like of that. Um, not all of it, hopefully. Um, and then figure out, by that time, hopefully, we know what we can do as far as getting money back to the general fund with it. And then as far as the nonprofit grants, personally, I think I'm, I'm, I'm more comfortable with letting the county handle that. There's very few Woodridge-centric um nonprofits that are working just in town. They are more likely, excuse me, likely to be spread out amongst various communities, and it sounds like the county is already putting together um something for that. And right now, my favorite nonprofit would be the village. So.
Can I ask an additional question, just moving um past that? Um, good point, though. Um, so with a community that has sustained a disaster and the added expense that the community has had to incur, um, any of the dollars in ARPA available? I I haven't seen anything that has stood out to me, but I just wanted to clarify and make sure I know that we are. I know that we are looking for all of that.
I believe that the answer is there's no, it has to be in, in response or in product of the COVID-19 pandemic.
Just wanted to clarify, because I know people have asked that question, so. So getting back to the question at hand, if we can, the one-time grant, making it a formal grant request and checking, maybe making one of the points in the application being if they have received funding from ARPA from anywhere else, the county, the state, anything, as being a criteria for consideration. So I'm going to ask, so trustee Page had brought that forth, any feedback from our fellow board members?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, could you clarify what, what you're looking for feedback on?
Are you wanting to do a formal grant application?
No. No, I don't, I, I agree with everything trustee Cruzek said, for all the reasons he gives. But also, I have a fundamental problem with government using taxpayer dollars to give to a charity of their selection and their choice. I, I have no doubt that this is a great organization, it does a lot of good work. But I'm sure everyone on board could come up with two or three organizations that do similar work. And how are we going to get in the business of choosing, and why should we? This money is resident money, resident, we should encourage residents maybe to give money? When we put something on our website, we could tell them of these great organizations they can contribute to. But I don't think it's our job to start picking charities to spend public money on. Thank you.
At this point in time, I would agree with trustee Abbott and would be against starting the proposal.
Thank you, trustee Page, we have you already. Okay, thank you. Trustee Martinez?
No, I'm, I'm fine. I agree that the first priority should be the village. As far as the part, we already received 2 million dollars in ARPA money this year, right? And if I understood what I, what you said is those funds must be allocated to projects that have been identified already in 2021, but it may carry over a few years?
They don't have to be projects that are identified in 2021, any, anytime before 2024.
Any projects?
Correct.
Now and 2024.
Through 2024, yeah. Obligated to four and then spent through 2020, yeah.
Going back to what was trustee Blair asked us to the specific projects, I'd like to see a list of the projects that we could cover with those 2 million dollars and then subsequent 2.2 million next year.
I would like to wait on, on, I, I really would like to see where we could put the money to village losses first, especially since Administrator Stone has pointed out that the county is doing a robust grant program. I'm sure it's a wonderful organization, I, you know. But I think I would like to see the list and see where the money would be best spent first.
I agree with trustee Abbott's comments in regards to the utilization of the funds.
Thank you.
One clarifying question, do we have to spend the 2.2 we have now before we get the second payment? Or can we sit on it and do one big project for the four?
We can sit on it, yeah, it doesn't have to be spent before the, the other funds, just distributed in two different.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank staff and all of our presenters this evening, village board, for the earlier start time. I think it was very helpful to have the additional time to review everything and be able to ask all the questions and helps us make better decisions in the end, so appreciate that. So with no further business to discuss, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn the budget workshop of the village board, please.
So moved?
Thank you, trustee Page, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Cruzek, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries and our meeting is adjourned at 6:45 PM. Thank you, everyone, and please note that our regular village board meeting will begin.